Okay, we'll call the meeting to a end and we'll start with the pledge of the flag.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's nothing on the public participation sheet. Approval of the minutes from February 17th.
Likewise. One second.
All in favor? Alright. Okay, new business, the discussion of the open space. So Robbie, you wanna share?
My name's Robbie, I'm a roadmaster for the township. Sorta took control over designing and coming up with the park for the township. The development, which most of you guys live in. The developers required to donate open space, I guess you would call it, or some type of donation to the township. And we have sixteen acres of usable space. And sort of came up with an idea that it may be a good idea to put a park and some other amenities that will go along with the park that the community and a lot of the kids would be able to use. There's a bunch of slides, if we wanna go through the slides, I can sort of give the layout of everything. There's blueprints around it. In each one of the packets, there's also plans of what we sort of would like to do or sort of headed in that direction. Go to the next slide.
Did I increase that at all? Lower up?
Yeah. So basically, everybody's familiar, this is Rhino Drive. This is the main, the main route in. We just start with the outside. We're looking at doing some type of walking path around the whole perimeter of the property. There's sidewalk for a lot of it that would be incorporated into the walking path. Up here at this top corner would be a parking lot for the playground. There would be two individual playgrounds, one for two to five-year-olds and another one for five to twelve-year-olds. There are pavilions, pavilions and concession stands marked. That's not really set in stone just yet, it's kind of just on the plan for now. And on the opposite side of Rhino Drive is potentially a baseball field with also concession stand pavilion. That sort of thing, that layout isn't really a hundred percent just yet, still work in progress. And then right along Rhino Drive is a big open area that is still undecided or we could pick ideas or just leave it a grassy area. Or pickleball's a really big thing right now about what we would do there. So yeah, that's pretty much the overview. The rest of the slides, I think, are just zoomed in. There is opposite this parking lot here, I'm sure everybody's familiar with the soccer fields. We looked at expanding, working with the school district to expand the parking lot area, get parking for the soccer folks and also for the potential baseball field. To the next slide. Yeah, that's, the rest of the slides are just zoomed in areas of what you guys have on your plans. This is Sarah, she's helping to write the grant and helping the township to fill out the grant application. So I'll let her do her thing.
So I'm here to help collect some more public input and feedback as well in addition to Robbie and Jen and everyone else from the township. And so I want to share the timeline and how the grant fits into the overall park development. And then we have printed out some of the forms as well. You may have noticed they're in your packet, but there's also some printouts behind us. So I would love to get feedback, both people sharing verbally what your impressions are as well as writing anything down. You can write directly on these, their graphs, or put them, your thoughts on sticky notes. But I'll back up a little bit and mention that we're applying for funding through the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. So this is a state program that exists just to make sure that every Pennsylvanian has opportunity to be within walking distance or at least ten or fifteen minutes away from a public park. And so this is exactly what the funding program is designed for. That said, it is a competitive, it is a competitive program. The amount changes every year and there's no guarantee. But Robbie has been working really hard to put together an application that we hope will be competitive. And what the grant would allow is pretty much to double the budget of the park. We are able to get fifty percent of the total budget for what putting the park in, what the value is. And it also allows some, a lot of donations to even count towards that total. So because it's such a good opportunity, it also means the process is a lot slower. But that can work out for us because it's such a new thing to have a park in the township and it gives some time for sharing feedback and input. So the grant is due in April of this year. At the end of this year, in the fall or winter, we'll find out if the grant is accepted and then it wouldn't be signed until January. So that really puts a lot of the construction for all of this to not happen until next year. So it is kind of a slow process, but we work pretty fast on this and to just get the grant application in so that we can have an opportunity for this to happen next year. So what we're looking for, as the grant writer, what I'm looking for getting help with is the input on the things that are here already in the plan that Robbie has designed. He's put this together with a lot of input and feedback from different people in the township, but it's kind of reached the point where it's time to open it up to everyone. So we're looking for input on what's already here, whether it's things that you would use. We want to show, we also just want to hear how, like, how much interest and desire there is for a park, how much of a need there is. We're looking for just those general, that general question as well as specifics on what would you use a park for, what are you hoping to see? As Robbie mentioned, there's a lot of space that doesn't have anything designated yet. And so this is kind of round one, but there's always a chance to add more in the future and there's a lot of open space for that. So I can kind of pause there, but I will kind of, you know, go over that. There's the two playgrounds, there's a walking trail with exercise stations, the baseball fields, native plants and a big grassy area. So to kind of get input, we can either just have people share now what your perception is or take a few minutes and look at the sheets or look at the drawings and write them down. I'm not sure what the best kind of factors is.
That doesn't really matter to me. I think we just share questions, concerns, comments?
Sure. Yeah, sure, we'll take a few comments. Like how we got here, like Robbie said, Grande has to do something with that open space part of the development. The original agreement with was with the school district to donate it to them. But things changed in the administration and they no longer want it. So we talked about it, it has to get dedicated, they have to do something with it. So we asked them, you know, to help make some modifications to level it out and they're gonna do some things for us to make it easier for us to convert it into a park. The baseball association had approached us for needing another field. So as a township, we thought if we'd get some grants and keep the cost to a minimal, minimal to the township residents, we pursue this idea and Robbie has really taken it on and he's been working at this for about two years. So we feel it's a good project for the township. Richmond Township doesn't have any parks at all. So, you know, with some open space and some grant money, I thought this would be, we thought this would be a good idea for the township. So especially with the soccer fields right there and they can utilize the whole thing better parking and maybe make it cooperative for the school district in this. Everything to the left of the parking lot, the school district already owns. They own the soccer fields and all that. So just, you know, hopefully we're can. So, does anybody have any questions or some input, thoughts? Go ahead, offer.
Yeah, go ahead, no, you go ahead.
Well, my name's Alyssa.
Go ahead, can you put your name?
Alyssa Damianni. And I live in the development. I think, like, first, this is great. It's hard for us, I think, after all these years of it being nothing. At least for me, it's hard to think of like anything being there, so forgive me for that. But in a perfect world, I think it would be nice to just let it green. You know what I mean? But I understand that probably can't happen. I work in real estate too, so I am coming with also an understanding of just, you know, the fundamentals of real estate value and what this. I believe that this has great power to like affect our real estate values because it's literally at the entrance of our development. So any prospective buyers, if anybody's ever wanting to sell their house, when you're driving in, I mean, that's your first impression of our neighborhood. So, you know, it will affect the values of our home. I'd like for it to affect them in a positive way rather than, you know, a negative way to. We don't want it to lower the value of our properties, if that makes sense. So, so all that, you know, just to say how, you know, why, that's why we feel so strongly about this. And then obviously, it's in many of the homes, like literally in their backyard too. So, I don't know. I mean, I like the idea of the playground. Is there really a need for another ball field? I mean, I don't know, that's just kind of like where my initial thought is is on the importance of how is it going to affect the values of our homes?
We hope it would positively affect them.
Yeah, yeah.
And part of the improvement and part of the process to get that development done was to have some open space. The school district was supposed to put some sort of park facilities in there, that was the agreement. But that didn't happen and we wanted to just keep with the thought of having open space and maintain space. So that's, and I get where you're coming from, but that's our.
I mean, much rather that than like, you know, like a warehouse or something wacky. But that's just my, where I'm coming from with the whole project.
We appreciate the feedback.
Sure.
Yeah, so Brendan Moll, B-R-E-N-D-O-N-M-O-L-L. I also obviously live in the development there, but just a couple of questions. So, I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
Sarah.
Sarah, do you work for the township as well? Or are you?
I'm an independent contractor.
Okay.
Working just on the grant.
Okay, so you're just working purely on the grant. Is there, is there a, I guess, so from what I heard and what I understand is you could submit the grant and it could get entirely denied and there could be nothing from it, right?
There is always a chance of that.
So is there like a plan B for what this would look like if there was no grant money? Or is it, this is just all assuming that you get a hundred percent of what the grant money would be?
Good question.
I can answer that. I think we're hoping for grant money. If we don't get grant money, it'll be something scaled down.
Sure.
Scaled down, so maybe it's just a multi. Maybe it's not a walking path, maybe it's slimmed down. We haven't really crossed that path yet. But some sort of recreation, open space, no development, no manufacturing, nothing in that area. Just try and keep it with the theme of when this Willow Crest was developed.
Sure, okay. Sort of a dual role, I'm also the president of the youth soccer club. And I had reached out probably over a year ago about potentially putting a soccer field in one of those open spaces. And it looks like they are graded right now for soccer fields. So I'd love to see a soccer field kind of penciled in onto the right side of where the ball field is. That would be awesome, especially if there's consideration for expanding the parking lot. Because a lot of our soccer fields are actually into that parking lot that you have pictured there now. So that would be fantastic.
We're definitely open for suggestions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Part of the meeting.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and I think one of the factors in the grant application is we kind of have to prove that there's a need for things. So like the stats of like how many kids play soccer, how many fields, what the capacity is, how can we increase?
Right.
Those kinds of things really help for making those long-term plans.
Yeah, no, that's awesome, because, yeah, I mean, speaking on that behalf, our club is growing at this moment and we've actually expanded into Maiden Creek Park because we ran out of field space for our team. So having more space available to us, we actually go to Fleetwood Bible Church just off 662 because again, there's no, we're just kind of trying to suck up wherever we can. So having an additional field there and having that space available would be great for us. We paid, I mean, just for reference, we paid Maiden Creek three hundred dollars a year to rent their space. Not a ton of money obviously, but it's something. And I guess the other question I had is, you know, security, not in terms of like coming in and coming out kind of stuff, but I know Maiden Creek Park has a lot of problems with with things getting vandalized there, so much so that they put the security cameras and stuff around. I don't know if there's any thought about.
Well, it's been highly discussed and we love to put bathroom facilities along the one side. The sewer line runs along the back of Willow Crest and that has definitely been a discussion, unfortunately. I know Fleetwood put some bathrooms in and there's always that risk.
Yeah.
So definitely cameras, we thought about security and we definitely want to get on the police chief's radar that they patrol, you know, and watch it. But it is a challenge, you can't have anything nice that someone doesn't want to rent.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Unfortunately, so that was a lot of discussion around that too.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Oh, in the back.
I'm Sue Trichler and I've been resident here in the Richmond Township for forty-nine years since I married my husband. So as a reference, I think this is the most positive thing I have heard in the forty-nine years I've been in this township. And I will tell you that as a grandma, as a mom, as an aunt, this is fantastic. I think that one of the things that Robbie said was that it's something that the kids can use, but I would like to point out that's multi-generational because that can also be used by older people. I know I'm in a club that during the spring and summer and fall, we do walk. That's an excellent place to walk, I drive grandchildren to school and you see these people out walking and they're walking on the sidewalks and, you know, sometimes they're not even shoveled with the mess we had this winter and stuff like that. I think this is fantastic. I know the question came up, is there a need for a ball field? Yes, absolutely, positively. I know even when my kids were playing ball, it was hard to schedule to get onto those ball fields. And I think he brought up a good point in the fact that even the soccer fields, you know, they're still looking for that kind of thing. And team sports are a good thing, it teaches kids to work together. You know, it's not the "I" mentality, it's the "we" mentality. And that's a great thing to teach to our kids. I could be wrong and I will refer to Sarah and Rob on this, but I do not think that parking area is going to go into the present soccer fields, if I'm correct. Although I'm not positive to that.
It doesn't, right now currently, it won't affect the soccer fields that are there now.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think this area, correcting from Rob, Robbie, this is more or less existing.
That's already existing, it's going to get.
There's a grass strip here.
When you pour into that stone lot, the expansion will be on the left side. If you can recall, there's a grass strip in between the stone lot and then there's like an access road. Just imagine that that grass strip will be eliminated and the stone parking lot will go over to the berm that you see there now.
I mean, there has been talk, do I still have the board?
Yeah, go ahead.
There has been talk about even being able to use those pavilions for like, you know, having like family reunions or that kind of a thing, which in the township, we really do not have. That's not a place, I mean, I can tell you that people call our church to see if they can use our facilities and we don't have like swings and slides and things like that. This is, you know, they say that the younger generation is getting obese. Well, if you have something like this, they're not going to get obese. And like a day like today, you could just take the kids from the school over, you know, and just enjoy some time out. So I absolutely am in favor of this. And I do not have my property right by here. I do know that where my son lives, but that's not Pennsylvania. A park actually upped their real estate values. But, you know, that's, like I said, that's not Pennsylvania. But I think that's much more optimal than the other woman had said about it. You know, we don't want a warehouse or something in there, so. I'm behind the supervisors on this park one hundred percent.
Brendan, can I just have, I mean, this is, I don't know anything about soccer. What are the dimensions? Is it a standard size soccer field or is there smaller sizes? Like this here isn't a full-blown baseball high school, it's the next level from Smith Field.
Yeah, sure.
So it's the next, that's their need right now. And I'm just wondering soccer field.
Yeah, so we have, we have like three different sizes of fields, basically. So a small, medium and a large, if you will. I would say in that space from where that ball field is to the right side, we could fit our largest field in there without much.
Is that, is that, is that your need? I mean, is that the need or is what's, do you have a need? I mean, I'm not putting you on the spot.
Yeah, but I would say, I mean, actually, so Mike's saying this, he's our vice president of our club.
As of right now, we only have one field that is at the biggest size and that's used by the middle school soccer team. So if they have anything, we obviously are second.
Yeah, I would say our need is probably at our younger ages for the smaller fields. The small and the medium fields are probably where our biggest needs are. That's where we have the biggest numbers in our club right now, naturally, it's a youth club, so.
And the maximum size, what is the full-size one, what is that?
Uh, it is.
I mean, I can look it up too, I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, I would say it's like three hundred feet long, maybe one seventy-five wide, something around there.
It's just my own opinion.
Yeah.
Alright. Yes, sir.
Richard Redenhold, may I approach the screen?
Yeah. Do you want the overall, the whole big picture?
No, I think it's a beautiful facility. So this will be a pavilion, correct? I just want to make sure I understand. And this is concessions. Now, from an accessibility and mostly an optics standpoint, would it make sense to transition dumpster area over here, bringing it closer to your concession stand?
Yeah, that will be moved, the dumpster will be over there. It's not on the drawing.
Okay.
Okay.
That was my only.
On the same page.
Well, I was, I don't think our neighbor would like to have a dumpster in his backyard, really.
The dumpster will move over to somewhere in about where the rounded portion.
I was gonna say that, I don't think our neighbor would appreciate. You just put a nice deck and a fence there, I don't think he would appreciate.
And a hot tub, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think he'd appreciate to have a dumpster in his backyard.
There's plans to move the dumpster to that rounded portion of the stone lot and put some type of privacy fence around that facility there, so.
These are very preliminary plans, I'm just trying to get input, but thank you. And I don't think the pavilions or the concession stand, that's probably phase two maybe, depending on the grants.
The concession will be in this one, some of the pavilions will be.
Yeah.
So in front of where they should go, let's hope.
But in the overall plan, we just want to make sure that we're covering our bases.
So this is a multi-phase effort, so you do.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't think that the township could afford to put it in full-blown, even with the matching grant. So we're thinking whatever we can get and get done in phase, I mean, we can do multi-year grants.
Okay.
So we can do, we want to minimize the effect on the township residents. So whatever we can get and match, we'll do phase one and then maybe phase two and so on, depending on the funds.
Okay, understood.
That's where we're thinking.
And that's where it's good to hear what people want to feature.
Sure.
I'll let him go first.
Go ahead, what's your name, you gotta state your name.
Owen Blyer.
Oh, Owen Blyer.
And I feel like an addition onto it, I feel like a garden would be nice because it'll give like visual aspects to the town and will make it look more pleasant for the people that's living there and like useful to others. Like it'll give a more vibrant look to like the area around the town.
Yeah. We're looking for volunteers to work back on, we got weak teams. I'm taking future helper.
Yeah, so something that we have put in so far is native plants and going for ones that are like kind of as low maintenance as possible, but thinking about ones that can still benefit wildlife and also showcase color throughout the year. So making sure that there's foliage from spring all the way into the fall and winter. And thinking about those aesthetics is a really important part of it too. And we're going to need volunteer help for some of those shrub and tree plantings and ongoing work. And there's also, we didn't mention this, but there's a, we've put together like a study committee of some community members. So Sue and Sandy are both on that and kind of ongoing, like hoping this is just the beginning of all that work of putting this in will really go into the future and need a lot of community effort going forward.
Yes.
Kate Hughes. I definitely wanted to echo what Alyssa said. I mean, you know, understanding that, you know, we bought that property knowing that there would be something there, but what we were told was that there was going to be playground equipment, pretty much where the designated playground equipment is. We did not expect there to be kind of like a pavilion, a concession stand, more fields. Like that was not our expectation. So I guess with that in mind, you know, I don't know, you know, I get to your point to the walking path and that's great, but practicality reasons, you know, sidewalks aren't shoveled, the walking path's not going to be shoveled. So like there, you know, realistically speaking, the walking path is fine. I see how that, you know, kind of turns in with the sidewalks that are there, that's not that obtrusive. I'm kind of more for Brendan's idea with the soccer fields because I don't think, again, obtrusiveness, right? That's basically a field most of the time, that's what I'm on it when it's in use, but it's not really an eyesore. And can you guys help me understand why we need another ball field? Because to my understanding, we have a ball field that's never maintained and never used.
That was from the Fleetwood Baseball Association requested that. So they're directly involved, just like the soccer association, they came up with that need.
But we have a ball field that's not being used, it's never maintained. It sits there in the corner, so they used the one out by the road. There is another ball field, I mean, anybody here, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's never maintained, it's never used, it's fully functional. There's two ball fields already there. I don't understand the point of building another ball field when we have an overgrown ball field sitting totally usable.
Yeah, I don't have that answer for you, if they're not allowed to use that or if it's something with the schools that's a softball field, I don't have that answer. This was just a need from the Fleetwood Baseball Association.
No, I get that, I'm just kind of trying to point out the obvious things that just don't make sense in my brain as to why we're doing this. My only other, not my other concern, another concern I have is I know from soccer that parking lot is mobbed when there's soccer there. I mean, I don't know how much that's going to expand parking wise, but I would think with what you're planning on doing, and is that the only parking for all of it? Or is there parking on the other side?
There's parking on the other side too.
I mean, I would think.
There, either one.
Go down, go down.
Sorry.
There is, so this is the area they talk about, the parking expansion. This is actually a new parking area here as well. So it's beyond the screening, the path, the playground area and then between that existing tree line. and then between that existing tree line.
My only other thing that I'd just like to bring up, I don't necessarily have any suggestions for it, but maybe it'll spark somebody else. You know, I have, by the, Owen's eleven, I have a thirteen-year-old. By the time this gets built, you know, they're teenagers, teenagers. It's great to have the playgrounds for the younger kids, but there's that whole group of kiddos that we're missing, that we want them to stay out of trouble. We want them to, we want to know where they are. And they also, it's not appropriate for them to be over hanging out on the playground equipment, like we often see at the Maiden Creek Park or at Fleetwood Park, because they kind of don't have a place to go or something practical to do. So throwing it out, I would love to see something, even if it's just, if it's hangout spots and tables that maybe have, I don't know, you know, or like some kind of stations that are for older kids, but not necessarily athletic. I think that population gets completely left out of all these types of plans. It's for the older people, we have the walking and for, you know, in your middle age, we have your fitness stations. And then we have the little kids and we have a whole group of kiddos that we need to keep them active, out of trouble, and we want them to socialize.
Well, we're definitely open for suggestions for that age group. It seems if you don't have a gaming machine to get that age group, forget it, they're not even going outside.
Well, also, you don't have, and and me too, I mean, I have two elders, twenty-one and twenty-five. So I've been through this and there is no good place for them to go. People don't want them at the park because they don't want them hanging out on the playground equipment. They want to be able to go there, take their kids. They don't want their kids subjected to swearing and all the stuff that goes on with teenagers, right? But it, we need a place that's safe also for them to go, that they're encouraged to go, where they're not kind of misfits everywhere, like show up.
Right.
That's not helping, that's not helping. It's still pushing them further inside, you know? And my daughter wants to go meet her friends at the park. I also don't feel comfortable with that, same reason, as a parent, I don't want them hanging out on the playground equipment. That's not for them anymore, right? So again, I don't necessarily have suggestions, uh, maybe just putting a bug in everybody's ear if there's still time to think of something.
There's still time, this is preliminary, this is what we're getting input for. This is just, you know, our, our first stab at it and with the engineer and just trying to get feedback because we want to utilize, worst thing to do here is build something that no one will use. That would be a real, that would be a real, that'd be a real misuse of funds. So that's, that's part of the grant. And and the grant, Sarah wrote a lot of grants and this is the process the state puts you through for that reason, to make sure there's a need, to make sure there's people that buy in and then make sure there's adequate, you know, uses to get it done. So, yes.
Um, Tony Kember. Okay, um, so just, um, you know, something again with, with the parking to consider, um, because this is our only way in and out of our development, just to, with traffic. Um, you know, with, obviously with soccer, we see a lot of, you know, it doesn't affect us now because there's a separate parking lot, but a lot of traffic. So, um, I'm, I'm just concerned about if that's an extra parking and if, you know, we add on, that could create a lot of traffic for us because that is our only way in and out. Um, so it's just something to kind of consider as it's, you know, if we add on another soccer field and there's not a, an additional parking. Um, and then, um, kind of to add on with, you know, to Owen's suggestion with the garden, um, I kind of wanted to add a little bit more, but like a community garden, um, with that. And that's kind of like, with the community garden is giving everyone kind of their own plot, um, of land to kind of, you know, um, you know, kind of, kind of to get and grow their own if they wanted to. I, I mean, there may be more to it. I've, um, I know, um, I think Hamburg kind of has something with it. They can, you, and you can actually even charge, um, somebody to have like their own plot. I, I don't know what they charge, um, for it, but, and there, there's parameters around it. You know, there would have to be a little research that could be done and what they could grow, but they could grow like, you know, vegetables or fruit or whatever it is. Um, but again, a suggestion that can kind of be done, you know, with that, but a community garden where everyone kind of has their own little, whatever the plot would, I mean, again, research, but something to consider within, you know, within there.
That would be good for like the teenage kind of, you know, age bracket.
Yeah, I think that's what he may be looking to, the community garden.
The community garden, yeah, yeah.
May I, are you, may I question Brian? Is she specifically saying these would be individuals that each family then would reap the produce that they did? We're not talking, because a community garden in my mind, because I work through the church, is one that then goes to the food banks or goes to the, that's not what we're talking?
I mean, it could be, it could be anything. I mean, I'm open to, you know, explore, suggest.
It's just something that they can garden and have a piece of land and sort of.
I just wanted to make sure that that's where I'm, you know, that I was understanding that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I honestly, it could be, it could be, from what, what I've seen is, yeah, somebody you own, you know, you own a plot and then, yes, you, you grow it and then it's your own, but, you know.
Well, our church just, uh, what, a couple of years ago, I don't know, uh, they did one called Potato Project and our land was then used and we were volunteers and we gave everything to the food, you know.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure, and we call those community gardens.
Oh, okay.
And that's what a lot of other churches in the area do, so I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that.
Yeah, no, this was more like, you know.
Individual families and they reap what they grow.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So we're gonna have a second meeting, what's, what's the date of that?
Twenty-fourth, I believe.
The twenty-fourth at the Willow Crest. You guys see the plan, go home, tell your neighbors, come out, we want, we want honest feedback. And then, uh, we'll go from there.
Can I just say, for the little ones, too, and I know this might sound silly, but that little, like the water retention area, that will stay like that, right? Because kids love to sled down that hill.
Yeah, it's, it has to, because it's, yeah, it's water retention. We'll have to mow it and maintain it, but.
Oh, but yeah, I know it draws, it draws kids from, from, you know, all of Fleetwood, really. They love to sled down that hill.
Sure, sure. Any other?
Just real quick, um, to piggyback off of the Rhino Drive, it's Mike Schwab. Um, are we gonna try to police or keep people from parking along Rhino Drive? Because, um, I can tell you just with soccer, we'll fill that parking lot on a weekend. And then if the one, uh, between the soccer and baseball fields, and then if Faba has a game or I know they run tournaments, they have a tournament, it's gonna bring even more people. Um, we already overflow into the elementary school parking lot. So I can tell you, if we don't have no parking signs or anything like that along Rhino Drive, they're gonna park it up and it's gonna be hard for us to get in and out.
Yeah.
We'll have to address that.
I'm, I'm pretty sure there's, the parking signs are already there.
There is up until the, uh, the median, just, just, yeah, once the median stops, there's nothing.
I mean, I would suggest, I would suggest, obviously, there'd be no parking signs all the way up Rhino Drive.
Yeah.
And then, um, obviously, the, the, the baseball association and the soccer association will have to, you know, work together with their schedules and if there, there could be signs, goes to overflow parking, um, in the school district, um, parking lot, we would obviously have to discuss that with the Fleetwood School District.
Okay.
Um, I have something else to say to you, so I think will be like a good addition onto it. Having like a little pond, because I feel like all the geese around like the front and center always go into like where the, where your area of plotting would be. So having a little pond for them to like circle around and like be there and like swim in, I think will be a good touch. And since like the willow tree is like a, like a big thing for like the arc, like, oh, center area, we could have like a giant willow tree that goes up over the pond and give it like a natural look.
I thought you meant to say.
You build it and you don't want it?
All right. Okay, thank you. We'll, uh, think about it and we'll have the next meeting on the twenty-fourth and we're looking forward to some turnout and maybe research some of this other stuff. All right?
Thank you.
Now we're gonna move on. Thank you, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Good. Discussion of the land and land dedication.
Gonna stick with this.
Are we good, Sarah?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, it's the twenty-fourth.
Well, the, the land dedication document has been received. We got it last fall, but we're holding off on accepting it in order to have Grande complete the improvements that Grande agreed to perform. Um, and I think just from a liability standpoint, it's better to let them do their thing before we accept dedication. As a consequence of that, though, with the grant application, we have to say what our title is to the land where we have the money. And I think we can probably satisfy that grant application condition by simply referencing the agreement that we have that says, you know, found by Grande, but we have a legally binding agreement with Grande for the land to be transferred to the township uh, upon the completion of certain conditions. So I would hope that that would be sufficient for the grant application. But we do need to explain that in the grant application, there's a, a title page. I don't know if you're looking at the forms, but there's a page in there that requires me as a solicitor to explain who owns the land and if it's not owned by the township, you know, what are the conditions?
So you need a motion for you to address that?
Well, what is our timing to submit this?
The end of April.
End of April, all right. So this is, I would say, we're not going to accept that dedication until after the grant application is done. If that's the case, then you should authorize me to prepare that title document for inclusion in the, uh, grant application. And Sarah, did you hear what I just said? Do you agree that that would be the way to do that?
Yeah, if we can show that there is like a legally binding timeline, that by the time the grant's awarded and the grant agreement signed, you guys will be the title, I think that's efficient. But we need to show that it's, it's really guaranteed.
Yeah, well, we, they did sign the agreement we prepared. I don't recall if that has a deadline for performance. I think it's probably, well, I don't know, I'd have to look at it, I don't want to misquote it.
Yeah, I, I think it was really just the ethic completion of the items that we listed. I don't, I don't think there was, but again, I'm not.
So I'll make the motion that you prepare the documents needed to apply for the grant by the end of April.
I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Sarah, when, you already said this, but when did you believe that the grant award would likely occur?
So it's, the earliest it tends to occur is September. That's pretty unusual, most of the time it comes out in December, at the end of the year. And then the grant agreements are typically signed in January, so January twenty-twenty-six.
So it would be basically by the end of twenty-twenty-five, we would have had to resolve this type of issue with Grande, is that correct?
Yeah, and, um, that's just for like the grant, the funding to be dispersed and the agreement signed. Once the grant is awarded, there are several years to do it, but we don't want to get into that kind of timeline.
I think we should be in a shape to do that by the end of the year, I would hopefully.
Yeah.
We'll send a supplement where we could provide them with that actual resolution, that is what you're saying? Once everything's completed and they take over the street, or the open space, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll look at the agreement and see, I mean, I would think that we could take it wherever we wanted to, but I think it's still our intent to get that work out of Grande.
Yep.
Okay, I understand. I'll prepare that document, I'll share it with you, Sarah, and you can tell me if it looks okay to you before signing.
Can I also add, there's a consideration around the, um, maybe a need for a waiver of retroactivity and determining if the value of the land is something that we can use towards the match. That's also kind of tied to this with the timeline. There's an additional form I'll need to put in, um, if we can use that land as a match.
Yeah, okay. So the waiver of retroactivity, I usually think of that as spending money before we applied for the grant or received the grant. So in this case, or would the waiver mean that when we received the land and that was before the time that the grant was received? Awarded, okay, that that would be acceptable, okay.
Yeah, this is the only confusing part, really, of the whole process. Um, the requirement with matching funds is that you can, anything that's expended on the project can only be eligible match if the grant agreement has already been signed. So anything that's spent on the site before January can only count as a match if we sign a waiver, including the donation of the.
So maybe it's good that we haven't accepted the land yet so that we can ask, or include that waiver with the other.
Yeah, I think this actually could be unintentionally bent.
Yeah, okay. So you can help put that together also, the waiver, okay.
Okay, approval of Robbie signing the letter of matched commitment. You just have to make a motion?
Yeah, I think we can do that, that's, um, but that is saying we're going to use the land as the match, even though we have.
Or any, um, it's really just like anything that is spent, whether it's cash or donated time. The match commitment includes all of those things. And we want like Robbie to, to sign it so that if the number changes between today, the meeting and the grant going in, it's within the range that's approved.
I'll make, I'll make that motion. All in favor?
Approve resolution to apply for open space grant, I made that motion.
All in favor?
We're gonna jump to the police report, just in case there's a.
Thank you.
Something more pressing. I got wrapped up in the.
No, no worries, we're good. I don't have a whole lot for this month, for February anyway. Uh, total incidents for February, one hundred and fifty-two for Richmond Township, nineteen crash investigations, thirty-six traffic stops, issued thirty traffic citations. We get total eight reportable crimes for the township, we made five arrests. Twenty-eight hours of criminal investigation follow up and six hours of court time. Uh, so we took reports for receiving stolen property, unauthorized use of a vehicle, theft, stolen conduct, and due warning. Personnel, Officer Reese has, she started training with a B-Sert negotiations element. And I'm still looking for part-time employees.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Court code enforcement from February twenty-two.
All right, for the period ending two-twenty-two, we issued nine permits. Total construction value of one hundred ninety-five thousand fifty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Residential building permits, six, three non-residential. Going to four twenty-six building inspections, four property maintenance issues, six zoning ordinance enforcement issues, and compliance achieved. We're for permit-wise, uh, mechanical permit, couple of zoning permits, demo permit, nothing, of course, there's always solar generators, so nothing too exotic there this month. And as far as the properties, it's a property over on Crystal Cave Road that we're working with to get some rubbish and debris cleaned up. That's been going for a couple of months. Fourteen zero-three-one Cutsdown Road, uh, Scott, I guess you've been involved in that. Talking to Attorney Muir about adding a driveway for direct access on the two-twenty-two.
Basically, there's been a couple of project, uh, properties asking whether the township has certain input as a, as a result of this, uh, condemnation for two-twenty-two. So, um, we give what input we can as it applies to zoning. Um, that case, they were worried about driveways not being permitted for properties that don't have a current driveway. It's kind of connected to the, I think it's the boat or RV lot wraps around the tax building there. I think the tax building is going to be going after the hate that much from it, but there's still a large property around it. So that was that question.
Okay. We had an issue over at the Sheets property, a lot of trash blowing onto the neighbor's property, the funeral home. That seems to be pretty much in control. We've been keeping after that, stopping them periodically and keeping the top of them, but the G C has been very good. And it seems to be policing the property better, so we're pleased with that. Property on the Salem Springs Road, we did write the civil complaint. And it has gone to the solicitor for review and then we will get it sent out. So that's on its way. Had a property over in Park Road that was scheduled for a zoning hearing that was canceled. Property over in South View Road that I'm going to meet with the property owner to address those concerns now that we're getting into the nicer weather to work on the property and get it cleaned up. And finally, my favorite property over in Whitworth Lane. I believe that property has been sold. The new owner had requested me to meet them at the property. It was a little different situation. One of the property owners on the lane has totally blocked access to it. So we went in the other end of the lane. And when we got back to it, one of the property owners back there had totally blocked off the property with sections of concrete pipe and concrete manholes and large boulders. So kind of a real welcome to the neighborhood for this. So I was kind of glad to get out of that. And the township will have no involvement in that. It's a private road, private lane, and it's strictly between the property owner and his neighbors. That's all I have for tonight.
Alright. Virginville Fire coming report? Any questions on that? Walnut Town Fire coming report?
Right.
Yeah.
Real quick, that was just one other thing. I guess there was a fire, was it yesterday, Jim?
I think so, yeah, Virginville.
Virginville would like me to look at the property. I'm gonna check that out tomorrow. I'm not sure of the address, I have it, but, but there was that as well.
And if you're in that area, check out the property at Forge Hill and six sixty-two.
Okay.
They keep adding shit, stuff to the yard and it's starting to look like a dump.
Alright.
Kid's left, he got lucky, right?
Huh? I don't know, but I'm still recording if they're watching. Lifeline ambulance report? Any questions on that? Okay, this Hannah Cathy bike ride they've done in the past. We've approved it in the past, although we really had any issues. It looks like the same route. They have the insurance here.
Is that the one that goes by our house?
Where do you live? Lives on Salkin Road, Salkiny Road, Fitch Road.
Is that where I live, Sam?
Yeah, that's where you live.
Crystal.
Brian knows where I live. Yeah, but we, I can truthfully tell you that even with the farming operation, we really haven't.
And they're pretty quickly through that. I don't think it's.
They mark the road. It's, it's usually pretty easy for the bike people.
Yep, I made the motion we approve it.
I'll second.
All in favor? Engineers report.
The Echo Hill?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, Echo Hill.
So they did, and I believe they're, they're here to discuss that tonight?
Yes.
Basically, it looks like they're looking to, as I understand it, raise the existing property, or at least the building, and adjacent, is it, is it part of the same property?
It's the same parcel.
Yeah, same parcel.
Would be willing to do a subdivision, carve off like three acres off a seven acre parcel.
Yeah, and that's, do you want to give a little background of where you are on it? Just because I think.
Try to make this brief because I know you guys already have pretty good me. My name's Chip Oz, I'm the attorney with Barley Snyder, represent Echo Hill Country Store. They operate at two forty-six Driveville Road. Dana Orton and Luke Weaver are here. They submitted a letter dated January twenty-eighth, so this is just a note that was already in the.
We have a good secretary.
Thank you.
I would say, you know, lumberjacks need jobs today. So the, the basic gist of it, as I understand, is that the property is owned R A and that the store was opened around about nineteen eighty-one. So we've been in existence forty-four years. It's prior non-conforming use. It's expanded a couple of times and it's up to about six thousand square feet total space. A portion of the, there's basically like a long driveway access, so some portion of it, you know, has folks pulling in and off, backing out on the Driveville Road. What they'd like to do, I think on that second page would be to, and then we need to figure out the mechanism. What they'd like to do would be to build a new facility, new parking area, new driveway access, do a subdivision to carve that off of the piece that has the residents on it. But it's not a use permitted in the district. So one of our thoughts, I guess I had four quick thoughts and then I'll have the Weavers give some, you know, additional background or whatever. But just to start the conversation, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. We'd be looking to increase it, you know, build a new facility, transfer stuff over, not operate both at the same time. So whether the, whether the township would consider acknowledging that it's a prior non-conforming use and authorize this expansion, you know, adjacent, that might be the simplest and cleanest if there was an appetite for it. Other retail is permitted in C two, you know, so there could be a contemplation about potentially rezoning. Could adopt an overlay that would allow retail use in the R A district on parcels. And then you pick it from three acres, you know, maximum size. And then I guess the fourth would be that we could seek a use variance. That's, you know, not as simple as like a dimensional variance or something. But again, if there was, if there was an appetite for that, again, if the township was opposed, I don't think we'd want to go that route. So again, maybe it would be something if there, if there was an interest that we could get, you know, authorization to talk to your consultants. We could, you know, post an escrow to, you know, look at a mechanism on, you know, what that might look like, you know, to pay to have your consultants, engineer, attorney review things. And again, I'm happy to follow up if anything else is a legal issue, maybe I'll turn it over to you guys.
Real quick question, I think I looked at this, was with that subdivision, the lots themselves stay within the minimum or stay above the minimum acreage?
I honestly didn't look at that. It's a, it's a seven point parcel and it would be a three point acre. And it could be, we could split more evenly or it could be larger if there was an issue.
I feel like I didn't look at that, that even just to the point of the subdivision at least, if they did subdivide it, it was still staying above the minimum. Not that that answers the questions that he has there, but at least one question at least. Sorry, you guys wanted to go ahead, I just wanted to ask quickly.
Hi, I'm Dana with my brother Warner, my dad Luke. Dad started the business in nineteen eighty-one, like it says there. He operated, we were a stove shop prior to that, that started back in the mid-seventies. And he raised that building and built this building in nineteen, nineteen eighty, seventy-nine maybe? It was very late seventies, right on eight, when I built this. And then we've added on like you described. So Orton owns a property, him and I own the business together. So the one big thing about doing it, subdividing it and would give us, help us maybe make it a little easier for us to create an exit strategy because now it's separate piece and not connected to his place.
Water and the sewers part of the residential property comes off the house.
The water and the sewers time, the water and the sewers time, yeah. Plus, the driveway's unsafe. Fortunately, we only had one very serious accident over the years that Dan and us have operated there. Sometimes we get really worried about that. And so we'd like to make that safer. So that three acre thing as far as subdividing it off, that's just throwing numbers out there. We're just kind of exploring like with, we've filled chip, we don't know where to start, we don't know anything. So we were advised to do a reference to, he'd be a good guy to help us on this project. So we just sat down with him and we're just thought that we just opened up with you all and, and tried to figure out what we could do. The building is obviously showing a lot of age and that's another concern. It's gonna either, either we have to do some major upgrades to it.
It's not structurally bad, but.
No. You know, you really should have new siding and different stuff like that and.
When was your last expansion? Because I think I was here when you guys. Maybe not, early two thousand?
Late nineties.
No, early.
Early two thousand.
Maybe not.
Yeah, this back, back.
Yeah.
We did talk about one.
But we did, maybe, might be thinking about the walk-ins.
Oh, the walk-in, yeah, yeah.
That wasn't really it.
You'll see a little, those little.
If you look at the little white things in the back there.
Yeah.
Who lives in the house, Orton?
Yeah.
You live in the house, okay. And you intend to stay there?
I'm sorry?
You would stay there after?
Oh, yeah, yeah. What we would do is if this all would happen, we would tear this store down, the original, we build a new one. Once that's ready to go, we're gonna tear the other one down, that would grass pasture.
Put a, put a privacy shrubbery between them.
But the house would stay?
The house would stay, the barn would stay, yeah.
Alright, also, in these two, what is shown in red, the triangle here, is that matchup with the green area here? I don't think so.
No, no, the green, it just happens to be the pasture, the seed pasture that's there. It makes it look like a property line, it's not at all, it's just a pasture. It doesn't, the actual.
There's sort of a lighter line through here.
That is, that line is the, is behind the back of the green. That's actually kind of a.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
This looks a lot bigger than what's green on here.
Very much so.
Okay.
We helped too, I didn't hand out the handout, you had the, had your existing and.
Oh, yeah. Why don't you just? We have enough for everybody. And then there's another picture on the back with it in yellow. That is a, that's the D, and that's, that'd be, that's one D and this is another D.
We also own the eighteen acres that are.
You're good. I have a little.
This right one, this is one D and this is another D?
Yeah, it's eighteen acres in the back that has no buildings or anything on it.
So this right here would be this part, right?
Yeah.
Right here, way down and way lower. So you have to, yeah.
And who owns this?
He does, he, he owns both. He, he.
Orton, yeah, he's probably. Is Driveville Road a township road or?
No, it's a state, yeah.
Scott, I think, I think the minimum lot area is one acre.
One acre, yeah, I just, I picked up on that. I was trying to go through the.
Right, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's alright. I was just trying to check on the non-conforming use part of it to see if there was something that fit in there and it didn't seem.
Yeah, I just, I didn't see anything real clean. But again, it's been, and if we were, you know, posing to, you know, add on, but I think.
Yeah.
Realizing the building needs renovations, revise in the parking, you know, to make a much smaller entrance instead of the, you know, the full front engine there. But again, it was just to sort of get some feedback into, you know, we didn't want to pursue variance if it, you know, wasn't a popular idea and if there's, you know.
Well, that's, the decision for the board here is, you know, what they're asking for can be handled by the zoning hearing board. But there's uncertainty about what the outcome of that process could be. Whereas if you were willing to at least explore the possibility of an amendment to the zoning ordinance, then you can control what the outcome is.
Mike, I. I like the idea. You guys do a lot of business there. It's, it's a good business. You're right, that is dangerous.
Well, that's the other part. Sometimes people come up the road and they can't find a spot right away, so then the traffic spills out on the Driveville. That, so we got another, another hazard there.
And they go speeding down through there. I like the idea of making it better. I mean, this definitely seems with the driveway and, I mean, bigger parking lot, you already have one store there, we're just moving. I just don't know how to get there. And my fear of changing ordinances is.
Where do I start?
Once you start, then you gotta, you know, if it was just one specific, I don't think it's one specific issue, right? It's the next guy down the river. I just don't know, I just don't know what the, I don't think what the ramifications of that is, and I guess that's.
Well, I think.
I defer to you, but my thought, I like the concept. You already have it going, if you're gonna raise that and just move it back, it's gonna make everything better. The situation, I think, I don't know about the driveway, I mean, it's, you're right, it is.
It is a much better plan.
Much better plan, much safer, much better. And if you're already doing business here, if you move it up there, I just don't know how we get there. How, how we get there.
Possible to do, Chip used the word overlay district. I mean, I've done a lot of overlay district ordinances which are targeting a project and finding a way to, you know, create qualification requirements in the ordinance that only one or a few properties could ever qualify for. So it's really kind of a, a unique regulation. But you are setting a precedent if you do that, that you're willing to work with people to solve zoning issues. So, you know, if you're willing to go through that door, I think we can work out a solution. But, you know, you have to be able to say no to others who might ask for similar assistance in the future.
Well, that's my concern. We want to be fair and level. And I, and I think we're always, I'm gonna speak for myself, I think I'm always willing to work for a better solution if the zoning permits it and we can come up with a solution. I think that's our job to, when there's an exception to the rule, to try and make it better for, for the residents and the public. I just hate opening up the door to something that wouldn't be better and that makes me a little. Well, I'm, I'm going to defer to, to the best way that we can get there. And I'm speaking for me and these guys might chime in here too. Whatever, the best way to go, I mean, this would be, if that's, if that's the condition, they're gonna knock this one down and take away that risk and put it over here and make it a lot safer. I just think it makes sense. They're not, we're not adding, we're not adding a, a, a retail store to a place that there wasn't one.
So, and, and to that point, and that's just kind of, would the, would the subdivision necessarily have to occur for you guys? Is that, is that an absolute?
Well, that's something I had thought about.
But I think, I, I get what they're getting at.
Well, yeah.
I mean, if, if, if something happens down the road, they gotta.
Yeah, it's, they gotta sell a whole.
Dwelling house is the issue.
It's two uses and, and the only place, the only direction I was going with that is possibly looking at that pre-existing or the non-conforming use, if it stays on the same lot. It's not a huge difference or looking at the, the possibility of finding a way of writing that that allows for it on the same property to be rebuilt within a twelve month period or something along those lines. I know there's, usually that comes along with a destruction of the property, whether it's fire or something along those lines. But that was just a thought I had. But if it's subdivided, then you have a new property and it's getting very unique in the way you rate that.
We, you know, if we understand what, you know, what the concerns are, I think we can try to address them. I think if the, if the issue with the.
I think if the, if the issue with the, this subdivision, if that poses issues, but the use itself wouldn't necessarily be a problem, then I think we could look at options about leasing, you know, to Echo Hill and then, you know, if you ever sell the property, it's subject to the lease to continue to operate. So I mean, we could, you know, we could figure out different mechanisms to address that. I, I think it's a bit of a stretch with the prior non-conforming use when you're taking and making it from, you know, six thousand square feet to ten or twelve thousand square feet and in a different spot even on the same parcel. To me, that's the cleanest if it's a prior non-conforming use. Um, and again, maybe that's something I follow up, you know, some correspondence with Chris, uh, you know, some justification or rationale for that, and then if that's, if that's hard to buy, then uh, you know, then look at the option of the overlay or um, you know, some other, you know, zoning amendment to
Brilliant. In the past, we've had situations not exactly like this, but things that the board has been in favor of. And the board, either individually or as a board, has voiced support to the zoning hearing board. And I think we've had good outcomes from those hearings in the past. I'm, I understand where you're coming from, and I think you can probably attack this another way by throwing their support behind it for the Z H B. I think that's something to consider as well. Well, the advantage of that is that the zoning hearing board can create a decision that is unique to the property and doesn't, you know, open the door to other properties getting exactly the same outcome because, you know, every zoning hearing application is unique and based on its own facts. Um, you know, it's just the uncertainty of the outcome. So, um, but I agree with Jeff that, you know, it would be meaningful for the board to express its support for a zoning hearing board application. And um, in that case, you know, the applicant could ask for all the relief that they want, including the subdivision, and it would be unique to that property if all that relief was granted.
What's the recommendation?
And the zoning hearing board has always been, I think, really fair. Probably the easiest of, easiest way to go about it too. Uncertain of the outcome though.
But, but again, the, the, if you folks are on board and there was a letter in support that, you know, what we didn't want was to decide we wanted to go that route and you guys don't like it and, you know, then
This is, I think this is a great way to do it.
Okay.
Like you're a member of the community forever, you come to us, we're really reasonable, we try to be if it makes sense to you. And this, this to me makes sense. Um, and I, and I would definitely support with the zoning hearing board. That would probably be the easiest thing
Sure, we'll, we'll get an application together, get it submitted, and then again, if you could, you know
Cleanest, I think, then we can maintain our zoning, we can maintain, and then they have the final say in it. Stuff happens that we don't want to or they don't want to. But there's no guarantee.
Understood.
I would put my support behind it, I think.
That's our point.
Yeah.
Do, that's, do we get a letter of support from the board then?
Yeah.
After we make our application?
Yeah, after we make the application, we'll do a public, public comment on it before it goes to the zoning hearing board. And, and we would support this idea, I would support this idea.
Yeah, we will.
Yeah, cause it just makes sense. I mean, it makes it cleaner, it makes it safer. You guys are already, you've been in business forty some years, and you do, you, there's quite a lot of people that go there, so it's, it's a, it's a good thing for the community. And, and cleaning that up, that is dangerous out front. So, I think it just makes sense, it's already there, it's not, you're not bringing a new store in. So, that, that would be my, my, is that, that would be my
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you. All right.
Good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, solar farm.
Um, we're kind of coming out of the weather here, it looks like, so I think they're gonna be pushing soon to try to see where they can convince this conservation district that they're wrapping up what they need to on those basins that they changed. In the past month, both the conservation district and myself sent them a, a letter or an email basically requesting more information on the function of the basins. We're just looking at the basin and acting and, and asking them to basically confirm that they, their engineer says it's functioning the way it should be. Even with me adding in the observations that it just does not seem to match what the report is. It might put a little bit more work on their end to show that it is, but um, I think the conservation district kind of did the same thing when they said, how do we show you that our ponds, our infiltration basins are functioning properly? And they said, well, here's your three options, and they were flood it with a, a hose, wait till a big storm comes through, or do a bunch of testing mixed with the storms as well, just to show that it is, so.
Kind of like approve when it throws some rain.
Yeah. Yeah, that's
Why are the concerns that we get what we were promised? I'm not certain that we have.
Yeah. That's, and that's, that's part of, right now, we're looking for the engineer's response to what we provided.
And how hard would it be just to make the outflow a little higher?
So, that was what the conservation district asked. I, I think we kind of, I thought we did. We got a response from the conservation district that threw me off a little bit, but they had asked, can you turn this into an infiltration basin? Which would be what you're asking there. That's the first question, and the other one I had was just by the function of the report, you can literally see where it's supposed to be as the water's releasing, and I'm not seeing that. So, I think they have to answer both those questions before they move forward. I don't know with the infiltration, if they're just willing to do it. But I think if they acknowledge that the other part of the question isn't working, then that's the option, is to consider, well, then just raise the, the outlet there. And, and the discussion we had here and outside, Sam and I is just, that's that first basin after the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
That's been the one, we, we're still waiting for the Asbeld Forum for the final numbers.
Yeah, I don't think there's a restriction there that we should, should have.
Yeah, and that's
I need a foreign attorney to prove it though, that's the problem, we just haven't had it.
Yeah, they're, they're getting closer to the, where they wanna wrap up, but there's a couple of questions, but we still have, I mean, the conservation district in our office has some carryover comments that they still have to address. There's some fencing concerns right there near the railroad, and they're gonna be changing that. Few other items, so, that's about where we're at. I'm assuming here, if it really is changing, they'll be pushing, so.
I, I think I would be prepared to that if they say, hey, how do we wrap this up? This is what I wanna see, you know, another foot on the, how hard could that be? You know what I mean? But you gotta, you gotta know, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I just think they're gonna wanna wrap it up and get their million dollars out of escrow.
And that's
And clean it up, but it, it's, it's not doing, by all accounts from everybody that I talked to, it's not doing what we were hoping it, or what we were promised it would do. Not hoping, promised.
The conservation district flat out asked that question, so I'm kind of sitting back waiting to see how they respond to that, and then the township can say the same thing just before we do our final leases and see what they say.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll keep you posted as that comes forward.
Have the escrow leases yet?
Not since before, since around the fall, I think we had one there right at that, but cold weather started kicking in.
But they still, they still have a, a million dollars in the sink.
Yeah.
The escrow, so. That's what we're trying to get back.
All right. Ford Hill Road paving?
Basically on that one, um, Chris, I don't, I think we said we didn't need the board to, uh, uh, we didn't need a resolution. So, the county has basically said that, and the Ford Hill Bridge, um, we met them out there and Robbie really kind of pushed asking why they didn't do anything to that bridge, and I think we talked about it the last meeting. They have the money going elsewhere, but the idea of the township assisting in just milling it and letting them provide the materials, well, that led to, yes, we'll provide the paving, yes, we can provide some, uh, the county can provide manpower as well, probably equipment and just be a, a, a quick joint adventure, or joint venture there, but um, they wanted to make sure that there wasn't a resolution needed to move forward, and Chris
I just said, the board can adopt a motion, just authorizing Robbie to work with that. As long as there's a clear delineation of responsibility, I mean, I, it's still a little wishy-washy from what I've heard about exactly who's doing exactly what. I mean, I hear a lot of willingness to cooperate and to supply, but, I'm with Robbie here.
Yeah, they're gonna
I mean, do you, is somebody gonna like put it in? It's a one-page sheet that says this is what the county's doing, the township's doing.
When we met there, um, I forget that guy's title, but he was
John?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, he was the engineer for the county.
He verbally said that he didn't see an issue that the county wouldn't be able to pay for all the materials um, for that, and then the township would just provide the labor and uh, the favor. And then in a following email, he added that they would pay for materials and provide labor if needed, on behalf of the county.
So I would like, I think it'd probably be cleaner and smoother if you just did it and sent them a bill.
I think the, well, the concern was the whoever purchased it.
Yeah, I don't wanna, uh, what, how much material would it take?
It's like less than five thousand dollars in material.
Yeah, it's not gonna take a lot.
Well, that would be a very clean way to do it, to just have Robbie order it, obtain it, construct it, and build. I mean, I would, but we need them to say that they're gonna do that, or that
I think what we would do is we would draft something up, sort of like a quote.
Yeah.
And say, this is what we're gonna do, X, Y, and Z, send that off to them, get their approval, and then we can do what we need to do.
Yeah, it's just easier.
Your thought is to do this during the summer paving?
Uh, I would do it when we uh, with uh, with uh, either Fleetwood, when, when they rent the favor or we can even possibly work with Max Tony and use their favor also.
Right, don't we do joint something with Max Tony?
We do a little chip with Max Tony and all the
That's it. Cause you can get over there with just a little milling machine, that's why they didn't do it, cause they had such big equipment.
Right, right.
Yeah.
It'll take a little bit to build up with the skid loader, but I think, you know, as we do, mill half, one lane one, one day, mill the other lane the next day, and then the following day pave, pave both lanes.
Yeah. I go across that every day, so I think it's a good idea. So, no, please, I mean, do we just make the motion for Robbie to be allowed to work with the county and get the
Yeah, the understanding that uh, we would offer to do the paving and bill them for the materials.
I'll make that motion.
Well, so, well, favorite.
The only thing I have, I did have that checklist, if you saw that, just to touch on, on your Chris. Um, Robbie and I did walk through with uh, Mario from Grande at the end of last month, and there is a list of the items that he wants to get out there as soon as the, the ground falls to be able to let them do some concrete work that they have to do, knowing that it won't crack again. That basically some concrete work plus adjusting some of the street signs. The lighting, they were supposed to have Meta show up at the transformers and put in uh, uh, what was it, disconnects at each one of those, Med Ed cancelment for whatever reason the day before.
Lovely, good.
So they're waiting for them to reschedule, so they're, right now, this is kind of a fat there mercy till they do that. Um, I think we can just, I'm gonna reach out, I was hoping to hear in a week or so to see if that happened. I can reach out to their local contact just to see if we can help, but once they, once they put those switch, switches in there, um, they need a building inspection or codes inspection so they can send a cutting card to Med Ed, who then can just activate it and that part's done. But, again, they're, they're waiting for them to do their part.
So, we have to keep on Med Ed, or
Yeah.
Six months from now, we'll be having the same presentation.
We did six months ago, it's
There. Just gotta keep that.
But that's, that's the procedure there that he laid out when we met with him. Um, dedication, I think we're all but just waiting for everything else to get completed, and then the streets can be dedicated. Um, we still have that basically waiting for the resolution, so I think when they're done with that, we'll be right there. The open space, Grande has the Rhino, the, the, the parking lot area on the other side of Rhino, then the field degraded out so that it's one solid field as opposed to the split, and then the parking area. I will say the parking area, we need to just talk with the conservation just quickly, cause it's technically outside of their permit. If they're okay with it to take up that grass area and put it into stone, then conversation's done, but that might be something, depending on who we meet with out there, conservation district, but I think it's gonna be something um, we can have Dean involved with, and I think it makes sense to just include that in everything as we wrap this up. But that's, that's it, that's, just wanted to kind of update you that I, I threw that into the mix right at the last minute here.
Okay.
All right, so this is our report. So, uh, we have for you, I don't know if you report on sewer delinquencies, and there's nothing I'm asking for the action on with this report. It's, uh, most of it is about the same as last one. Do you have any questions, or anything to see there?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Nineteen Eli Drive. That looks like a pile of paper.
So, what's going on with this?
Mr. Paris uh, had come into the office last week, and he asked if um, he could make a payment or what he needed to do to have the lien released from his property as he had just paid off his uh, mortgage. And knowing the actual delinquencies that we have, there aren't very many, there's a few liens, but I was not, this was not in my brain as to needing to have it released.
Has he been paying current charges?
He does have current charges, uh, he is paying for those, um, if they are, any late fees, he pays those when he pays everything else. So, right now, he is not delinquent on anything. Um, this delinquency actually happened, I believe, two thousand seven was the start of the lien, there was a two thousand seven lien, two thousand eight, and a two thousand nine lien put on the property. I did not find anything in our accounting software that stated any payments were made, um, unfortunately. And I know when I spoke to Janice Delay over at Fleetwood Borough, they took over our sewer, I believe in two thousand and twelve, and at that time, there was no delinquencies for him at that time. From what I found and what I gathered in here, there was a special amnesty program that he had with delinquency. He was actually paying on the sewer connection, which I guess there was a few homes that were in the sewer connections that did not pay, and then there was also the um, penalties and interest of not paying that fee. I don't know where it stands now, I don't know if he's ever made payments, I cannot find any deposits or anything in the system for that. So I don't know what he would owe, I just know the liens have never been satisfied. And I don't know where to go from here.
Well
The difference I'm getting
Yeah. Well, this is an old one. I mean, some of this timeline is since I became township solicitor in, I guess, about twenty ten. So, you know, we undertook a lot of effort to clean up these liens from Walnut Town in the first couple of years when I was here at the township. Uh, I know we collected a lot of money, um, I don't remember any of these specific accounts though. So, uh, if you would want me to see what I can find, I can look, I'm not sure that my records will be much greater than yours, so
Right, and he said he didn't know if he owed anything or what the balance was, he wanted to pay the balance, since he actually just paid off his mortgage, he just wanted the liens removed, and I said, well, let me give some research and I can call you back.
Well, you had an original, and you don't see anything, by the way.
I don't see any payments, but we had, like, the general fund in QuickBooks has stuff from before the actual lien was put on there, but the sewer fund did not start till after the actual liens were put on there, so I have no idea where
Yeah, we didn't have a sewer fund till I don't think, till Virgo was finished.
Right.
So it's just Walnut Town.
So I don't see, I mean, I, I see little payment stubs that he was paying So I don't see, I mean, I, I see little payment stubs that he was paying, like, like one of these notes stated that he wanted to have the board approve a hundred dollars a month, and the board stated, no, it was not enough, and he just kept paying a hundred dollars per month. I don't know how many times he paid that, because we don't have receipt books, we don't have anything on here for that amount, for any of it.
Well, it looks like the number went down though, from, you know, you have this report from March.
Right.
Twenty twelve, and in twenty eleven, it was over twelve thousand, in twenty twelve, it was below nine thousand. I don't know if that was a result of payments or of some credit for this, uh, you know, amnesty program that the township had at that time. What, do you know what the timeframe of the amnesty program was?
No idea, no idea. These are the only, these are the documents that I found on the computer, so I have no idea.
That was before my time also.
I think I need to at least make an effort to see if I can find anything to clarify this. Uh, are you willing to help me do that?
Yep, I'll make that motion.
All right, I'll see what I can find.
Okay.
And I'll talk to Jim about it.
When, when did you start your solicitorship?
I thought it was in twenty ten.
So you had to work on some of this.
Well, I mean.
Whether you have receipts of payment, but you definitely got this to do this. Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
It was, well, what you can see from all this is that Bob Graham, uh, created a lot of liens when the construction was completed and people didn't pay, and they leaned them, but they didn't do anything to collect the money. And then when I started here at the township, the board supervisors wanted to collect the money. And so we did a lot of activity to collect money. So, uh, I can't remember some of the accounts of what happened with this property.
This is like already two thousand seven.
So that's when the Walnut Town sewer was, construction was completed, and they, uh, started leaning people who didn't pay what they were asked to pay. But it looks like this property, um, he didn't voluntarily connect, so he didn't pay a plumber to connect him. Township actually had a plumber make the connection at township expense, so his charges were a lot more than what some other property owners owed. It wasn't just the connection fee, it was also the, uh, cost of the charges for a plumber to do the connection. All right, I'll see what I can figure out.
Okay.
Is he selling the property by any chance, or?
Not that I'm aware of now. He just stated that he just paid off the mortgage and it was, there was some liens on the property, so he came to us first to find out how to satisfy them.
All right, we'll see if we can figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, discussion of in-house sewer building.
Just something to throw out there, I know that we've had some issues with, uh, address changes from residents, and I know Michelle has some issues doing the, getting reports with the proper information from PAMs. Uh, I did find out the reports that they send us is the trial balance that they send us every month that I forward on to Michelle so we can get the delinquent sewer reports. Those strictly are just the amounts that they owe for, strictly for the quarterly billing. That does not include any, um, any delinquencies, any court fees, any attorney fees, any, anything. So when Michelle's getting those, it does not have all the appropriate charges on there. Uh, I did reach out to a few other municipalities, I know, um, Maiden Creek does use Diversified, which is expensive only because it's, because we only have four hundred customers. It's more expensive for us, if we would have more customers, it would be cheaper and save us money. I did reach out to Batar Systems, they have not given us a quote yet. I did speak to Tupperhawken, I think you pronounce it. They do billing in-house through QuickBooks. Can be set up for penalties, can be set up for per EDUs, uh, a very simple system that you can send, um, invoices out, track payments, people can pay electronically, they can pay with credit cards, they can do everything with the QuickBooks Intuit system, which doesn't cost anymore because we already have the QuickBooks package, it would just be the postage to mail off the actual billing and such. So that would be up to the board if they were interested, and I think we have a better option of reports that we can get from them.
What, uh, you know what we pay, I know PAMs collects on the delinquencies, they, what's, what do we pay them quarterly?
In twenty twenty four, we paid them just under fifteen hundred dollars for their services, for billing everything out. They do collect a certain percentage of delinquencies and everything else.
That's where they make the money.
Yeah.
Everybody would pay on time because.
Correct.
They couldn't afford that. And time wise, what do you think it would take, man hours?
That I don't know, but there's only four hundred residents on there, so it would not take, I mean, it's not like we have thousands. So I don't think it would take that long. Uh, the woman I spoke to over at, uh, Tupperhawken Township, uh, she did, um, suggest calling out to Diane Patton, who is, um, works through PSATs and QuickBooks. We actually purchased our enterprise software from her, uh, she actually set up their entire system, which charges the EDU, make sure the percentage rates and everything are on there, so I could actually reach out to her uh, for some assistance going back and forth and seeing how long it would take to have the process done. Cause I know, I think we have to have a ninety day, uh, before anything would happen with PAMs.
I'm not worried about the process, I'm worried about the ongoing.
Right.
Quarterly, what, you don't have no idea for you to sit down and build it.
It wouldn't take that long.
Yeah, what's the system setup is probably not, it's the worst part.
I can't, it just was, I mean, we can't get any independent source to do that competently. And it's not just us, Land Heartsville just started doing their own building.
Right.
Um, Morgana.
And if you outsource it, I mean, it's, it's expensive, but we're paying for their software, and also we have, uh, the lower amount of residents, so we don't have the maximum amount that they're like, well, you have, can't give you the discount for the excess amount.
Yeah. I, well, I, I really like the idea of doing it in-house, and I'm the one that got PAMs.
Right.
But they weren't what they had promised. And it's the fifteen hundred dollars we pay them, but we must pay Chris's office some way to figure out, does it get that bad?
Right, right. I dissuade, if you did it in-house, the money would be there exactly when they're paying it, not at a different time, you would have exact reports and such.
It's the reports, it's the accuracy of the reports that drives me nuts.
Yeah.
That we can't get better.
Makes it hard to settle up accounts, cause we always are, you know, the numbers never work out.
Right.
It's very frustrating. And then, you know, when you have people that want to settle up, there's always unbilled charges because they don't, you know, run the numbers the same way we do, and money gets left out. So half the stuff on this report that we gave you is like leftover costs from deals that we tried to settle.
So do you think we can get a clean cutoff from PAMs?
It won't be perfect, but I would think, I mean, what do we have, like ten delinquencies, and we have four hundred accounts? So, I mean, it's, there's always gonna be some cleanup, but most of your accounts are in good order at this point.
Right.
The other, the other thing we gotta consider is payment type.
Right.
Online payment, if there's some sort of mechanism to address that, credit cards.
That's, I, you know, I have clients who have set up credit card payment systems for utilities, and you know, a lot of people, that's how they do business.
Correct. I mean, we have, I think we have to have, the writing the check and mailing it is, is.
QuickBooks Intuit system will allow them to do it, will allow them to do the, the EFTs and the credit card payments, and they'll go directly into banking accounts.
That's where it's all going.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the way of the world.
I mean, if you have the software here to use it, and it's, we're already paying for it for writing checks and making deposits and everything else, why not actually use it for something else?
I would, I mean, I'm not happy, at least, but we should not be paying PAMs and then we pay the attorney.
Right.
To figure out what PAMs does, and then it's still not accurate.
Right.
Um, and there will be some late penalty fees that looks like it's a township that'll keep in-house, so that fifteen hundred's probably, I would guess more like three thousand.
I know Tupperhawken has less than four hundred, uh, residents, I will find out, I can reach out to them, just find out how long it takes them to do the billing, what they're gonna do.
Yeah, and do they, are they successful, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a real tough accounting.
No, it's, it's, it's not.
And it's one of those, and it's, and you can set up the actual, you know, percentage that it's gonna be delinquent, it, as soon as they, you know, you give a timeframe thirty days, if it's not paid by then, it automatically goes and just do the payment or whatever.
It's not hard. I mean, I don't know why it's so hard to get software, it's, somewhere you should build, but that's not even their money.
Okay.
I, I'd be forward, definitely investigating and moving forward.
Okay.
Do you think you have the time?
Absolutely.
And I'd even go so far as hiring someone part-time to do it if it's so needed, that's how.
Right.
Much I value good, good reports.
Well, if, uh, you can get help setting up some programs through QuickBooks, I think that's half the battle.
Right, yeah.
Yep. Once you do the data, you, you initial, you set it up.
Yeah.
It's probably a couple of clicks.
And you already, I mean, it's, the simplest part for us is because we charge it per EDU, it's not, it's not metered, so it's not. You don't have to wait for the number six or anything, it's automatic quarterly.
All right, thank you, Jim, thanks for taking the initiative. Stack that. Virginville Chapter ninety four report.
It's all in.
Seems to be okay. I don't, I'm looking up.
That's what it'd be, no, you're looking up. I'm a sucker.
A lot of info. Honestly, Roadmaster's report, anything to report, Robbie?
I don't really have anything else to add. Um, the only thing I thought of is with the, with the open space dedication coming out, I think maybe we have to reevaluate our mower situation. I know we got, um, a newer one, uh, a year or two ago, we have two other ones that are kind of older. Um, that's just something to think about.
Yeah, you're definitely gonna have to get some of them all.
Whether, whether, you know, the park gets done or not, we're still.
Yeah, correct.
Property, so, um, I also thought maybe it would be good to maybe advertise somewhere for like a, a summer helper, just to help kind of maybe weed whack or mow, and I know Fleetwood does that, and, um, they had pretty good success with some younger, younger kids, will be that. So it's just something to think about.
Yeah, I'm good with that, Robbie. I'd see your options, at least advertising out, what do you think?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Tiffany Drive, the light at the end where Walnut Town River runs, it's out again, and I called her about the, she told me to get a number off of it, they don't have a number on it from Met Ed. My kids take that bus at seven o'clock in the morning, it's dark now, so maybe I'll have them go to check it out in the morning, so.
I, I reported that to Met Ed, it's out again, or it was working and it's out again?
Yes, and the one right is not at that one, the old one right is to be up further, that one though. Cause my, my kids take that bus, so I'm just, either I'm there, my wife's there, I'm gonna walk them up or whatever.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking about, there, there ain't no Met Ed number on it, I'm right there. I called her up about it.
Yeah, I went and looked at it.
Did you find it?
I, I didn't find a number, but I gave them the location of it, that's the best I can do.
And then they'll cross the street, that pole, they don't have a number on it either, they don't even light on it, that's a holder, that holds all the, I guess, wires.
Yeah, just keep after them, cause they're.
Yeah, boy, that, you gotta keep after them.
Call them and then.
I even call them.
Yeah, that's all you can, that's all you can do.
Yeah, it was terrible. All right, Secretary, take away the bills.
Okay, in the general fund, we had check numbers one one eight six zero to one one eight eight five, including EFTs for one hundred seventeen thousand eighty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents.
I'll make a motion with that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
State fund, we had check numbers twenty-one thirty-two and twenty-one thirty-three for twenty-one thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-three cents.
I'll make a motion with that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Light fund, we had check numbers twenty-one seventy-nine and twenty-one eighty for one thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifteen cents.
I'll make a motion with that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sewer fund, check numbers thirty-two eighty-nine to thirty-two ninety-four, including EFTs for twenty-one thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents.
I'll make a motion with that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Jump the gun there.
Walnut Town Fire Espro, check number twenty-one eighty-nine for one thousand eighty-four dollars.
I'll make a motion with that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Virginville Fire Espro, check numbers twenty-one ninety-one and twenty-one ninety-two for twenty-two thousand sixty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I'll make a motion with that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I included in your packet some information about the Fleetwood Area Community Organization, the flyers that they wanted to send out. Um, I don't know if you have the up, if you had a chance to look at the pricing on mailing of the flyers, or if you would prefer to just have the flyers in the township building here or mailing, and what kind of information we would like to have posted in flyers. Unless we don't have any information, and we want to wait till the fall calendar to input the townships.
So is, is Steve gonna put, is anybody gonna put?
I know Maiden Creek is not partaking right now. They might have the information printed out and put in the office, but they are not contributing any money towards mailing anything out. I don't know about, uh, Fleetwood, I have not spoken to Chris yet.
And Fleetwood's gonna participate?
Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I have to find out from Chris if they're actually gonna go with the mailing, or if they're just gonna have flyers posted at the library and in the office.
Is this the cost annual, or is this just one time for?
Try one.
Just, just one mailing?
That's the mailing, correct.
That's not cheap. So what exactly is gonna be in this flyer?
Information from all three townships, information from the library, uh, anything that's going on in any of the municipalities. I mean, we can talk about the open space possibly, anything like that, but if no one has anything to contribute, I don't know if it's all gonna be library information. It all depends on, uh, the information that they put in the flyer. I mean, you say that it's gonna be like three, I guess she said it's gonna be like four pages long, but I don't know who's got all the information for it.
We're gonna have to write something.
Get something out the park.
Yeah. When are they gonna send the first one?
I have to find out, I know she was looking for the information, I don't know when the deadline is, oh, uh, due date is Friday, March twenty-eighth. That is for the June, July, August edition.
About seven would be to place the.
Probably would be a bad idea, but then we still have to do content. Well, look, I mean, the paving, paving is gonna happen and.
Yeah, somebody has to come up with the content.
Yeah, tire recycling, it's just, it's general stuff we come up with.
You don't wanna put too much tire recycling in there, cause then there's gonna be people from all out of town.
You don't wanna put too much tire recycling in there because then there's gonna be people from all out of town.
No, I'm just saying, maybe, maybe some of the residents aren't aware of it.
Of course, the bulk mailing, I, I think the bulk mailing would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not so bad.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Let's try it soon.
Yeah, we still gotta do it. You have enough time to put something together.
Yeah. I'll make it work.
It seems like you support this idea. Am I getting that?
I'm just trying to work with you guys, that's all. Trying to make it easy.
We definitely do that.
That's all I have.
Thank you. I have nothing from Chairman's report.
Sorry to be late.
Nope, you're doing public participation with us.
Been a busy guy. Um, uh, also Virginville had a brush fire slash structure fire here, uh, Friday upon Churchill Road. Um, the problem we have is people not keeping the branches and brush away from the driveways. These fire trucks aren't cheap, seven hundred thousand dollars, and I don't wanna take it on driveway that gets scratched and. Is there something we can do with that?
Where, where was it at? Where was it at?
Um, just beyond the twin churches in the back there. We had a brush fire there, yeah, last year or two. Um, I think he's gonna be getting ahold of.
Yeah.
Them. For codes because the house is in bad shape. One lady lives there with a bunch of cats and stuff. And the floors are real spongy. But the tree limbs were grown over so badly that we couldn't even put a big truck back there. They can only get small trucks back there or they got scratched terribly. Is there something we can do with the residents about getting it out there to keep the, the, their driveways trimmed back? I mean, in an oil tanker that would give them home heating oil, probably couldn't make it back there. That's how bad it is. We had to use the neighbor driveway to get back there and get through it.
A reminder to the newsletter.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
I don't think we have anything in zoning or anything like that or, or codes.
We can hope.
Do that, but something like that. That's, yeah, it's really bad in that area anyway. I don't know. It's a single lady. I don't know who she is, but maybe she couldn't do it, but that one's bad. I'm sure there's some other ones that are bad too. So he's bad.
It was actually that bad when me and John Mannmiller got there. John's like, there's no way there's a residence down in there.
Yeah, I don't know.
If there's something that you maybe could put in your flyer that you're trying to put out, maybe cut back the brush in your driveway for emergency vehicles or.
Make sure they're cleaning the litter.
Or UPS vehicles or whatever that need to get to your residents.
Mm-hmm.
Something like that. It's. I don't like getting a real expensive truck with a scratch up to the side. It's not gonna last us a long time.
For sure.
I won't.
But we have to, we have to, but.
Yeah, it's something people don't think about.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up.
Fire access.
Yeah, I told Mark I'd bring that up. So he knows.
I don't think I see that. Alright, anything else?
I have a question. If, I may do that because I never sign in.
You're gonna have to sign in. Hey, you got the Keith, you got the Keith waiver, so. Whatever you'd like to do, you have a couple.
I stand on my own. I'm a protestant.
You have a couple free, you have a couple free. Hey, you have a couple free.
That's why, he will verify the fact that when we were down at his office, it doesn't work that way. I stand on my own.
No doubt.
I, I do have, um, not as much as Robbie, but I do have a very interest in the fact that, um, Keith has to pull out at the end of this driveway, which is wonderful since he's, we kind of do, it's great. But I pulled out there often enough with grandchildren in the car, uh, whether I bring a pineapple upside down in for the guys or I bring Keith because he provides lunch or whatever. That's not safe, gentlemen. And I know you guys have been trying. I'm positive about that. But is there anywhere else we can go above or whatever? That, you can't even see.
We, we are tracking it down to the fullest extent possible. No holes.
And, and I do believe that, Brian, because I know we have even brought that up in our park thing, you know?
And we, and we tried, we tried to be, you know, very, the safety aspect of it, we talked about it here two months ago. And, uh, it's just, I don't understand why anybody would take somebody else's safety away and put somebody in jeopardy, but there's no concern for that. So we print, we're, we're, we're doing everything we can. We're, we're, we're proceeding with this every single week.
Well, if there's anything that I can help you with, please reach out. You all know me. Um, but, and my guess is when they're in the trucks, they may be high enough, but with my van, I can't, I can't see.
It's, it's definitely.
And that definitely is not safe. What's wrong?
Yeah.
I'll keep that to myself.
Yeah. It's, uh, it, 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 we're, 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 we'll be non-stop till we get it resolved.
Well, anyway, residents, because I'm not the only one that feels that way.
That, 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 that we can't, we get a lot of complaints and there's, we're not gonna stop till we have it addressed totally. So.
Well, thank, thank you very much and.
Thanks, thanks for coming. I, I.
Hey, this park thing is an excellent idea.
I appreciate it. And I, I think for the most part, I, I get their concern in their backyard. Everybody wants stuff, but not in their backyard, but.
I have a campground in my backyard.
I think it'll be an improvement. I don't think it would hurt real estate values and stuff. Luckily, we have the police department. I mean, if, without the, if we'd have to rely on the state police, it'd be, I mean, it'd just be a little more challenging, I think, but, but I think all, I, I think it's a good thing and Robbie did a great job and I think we have.
Absolutely.
Su- support here, you know, overall, they're even residents are, are right there. So it's gonna be a good thing.
Are they all in Richmond Township, the whole development?
I think they're all in Willowcrest.
Yeah.
Which is all Willowcrest, yeah.
Yeah, that's in Willow, that's Willowcrest Development there. That's in Richmond Township.
The whole state?
Yeah.
All of it, okay.
And that was part of it when they designed it. That was gonna be open space and what they said, they playgrounded. I mean, it's not something we're, we're not reinventing the wheel. We're just trying to carry out what the township made them do. And then the school district had agreed to it, but, but backed out.
And the other, the other part of it too is it's, it's restricted to recreation. So the, the idea of warehouse or commercial, it just can't.
Yeah.
It's not permitted. It's gonna be something populated.
I know I'm talking out of, don't put this in the minutes. But, we're in a meeting or two.
It's, it's still recording though, it's still in public. So.
But the truth is that that has to be an asset. I would think, in my own heart, I would think that would be a, an asset to.
And it's better than, I mean, we gotta mow it, right? We gotta take care of it if we're gonna take it. And we might as well have something nice here. And for the whole, it's not just for Willowcrest, it's for the whole township. So try and look at what's best for the whole township. So thanks for coming.
I do thank you for considering it. Truthfully, gentlemen, I think it's a real asset to the, to the township.
We do too.
And.
We're really supportive.
Young woman.
Yeah.
I have to talk to her every now and then when I have to get her the yellow key for me.
Alright. When I, if nothing else, I make a motion with Jen. All in favor? Hey, thank you. Three different options. Okay, you know, you know my personality.